We'll call our meeting to order. This is a regular meeting of the Mayor and Borough Council of the Borough of Seaside Park County, Ocean State of New Jersey, held on Thursday, June 22, 2023, scheduled to begin at the conclusion of the work session meeting, which has now just ended. Pursuant to the provisions of New Jersey's Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting was properly provided by transmitting a notice of the meeting for publication in the Aspery Park Trust and the Star Roger on January 4, 2023. Notice of the meeting in the governing body has also been posted in the corridor of the municipal building and in the office of the municipal clerk. The local-
Councilmember Applefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilk?
Yes.
Council President DeMichael?
Here.
Mayor Peterson?
Here. Now let us all stand for a moment of silence to be followed by a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. Those are the June 8, 2023 work session and the June 8, 2023 regular meeting. Are there any questions, comments from council or if not a motion?
Make the motion.
Motion by councilmember Kraft?
Second.
Second by councilmember Condos. Local?
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Applefield?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilk?
Yes.
Council President DeMichael?
Yes.
Next are authorizations. There are three. The first, an event, Love Right Yoga on the Beach, July 17, August 1, August 16, August 30, September 15, and September 29. The times are varying, 6:00 PM, 7:00 PM, and 7:30. Location, Stockton Avenue. The second is Soul Water Surf Yoga Camp. Dates, June 28, 7:1, 7:5, 8:12, 15:19, 22, August 2, 5, 9, 12, 16, 19, 23, 26. Times are 6:00 AM to 8:00 AM, Stockton Avenue. And the third is a patriotic bike parade, July 4, 9:00 AM to 10:00 AM, Bayview Avenue to 13th to 14th Avenue lot. And the published agenda indicates approval conditioned upon certificate of insurance and a county torment that I just conferred with our clerk and Sandy has those have just come in.
Yes, we received them from Mr. Cho this afternoon.
Very good. Any questions, comments from council?
I have a comment on the first one, Love Right Yoga on the Beach. Listen, listen here, on their certificate, why they don't need insurance, they're not naming Seaside Park as a commercial insurance.
I saw the same thing.
Yeah, the thing is, I mean, the other one, and you know what's weird about this? It looks like two different individuals, two different LLCs, but they both have the same website. So, but it looks like-
What's that?
Yeah, Yoga Del Sol NJ.com, both of them. So, I mean, it doesn't really matter to me, but, you know, the certificate's, they're different people and different insurances. It's weird, but yeah, I agree. The other one doesn't actually have an endorsement, it just has a Y in the thing, I assume that thing. Good enough.
Yes. We do have another reading, do we not, or is that cutting it too close? The proposed start date, July 17?
Okay.
Or we could have it conditioned and they're denied if they don't provide the adequate proof of insurance coming into town.
They probably, they're pretty easily obtained anymore today.
Yeah.
You know? Except that with the-
So, the thought is conditional, conditional?
Yeah, tell them just add Seaside Park as an additional insured under the description.
Either the hours-
Like the other one says it.
Yeah.
It's definitely a whole design additional insured, right?
Yeah. The hours, I mean, it's Stockton Avenue, shouldn't they have to go with anything, you know? Stockton Avenue, it's a morning or evening, and the beach isn't really open, so.
Any other questions, comments from council?
I was trying to figure out the surf yoga, I mean, what's surf-
I know, I was wondering that too. I mean, you're definitely not doing stand-up paddle yoga in the ocean.
I think they probably are on big boards and they just do the yoga on the board, I guess, I don't know. It's kind of weird.
We'll find out.
That's what I said, they will find out.
Doc, you surf.
Yeah, but not, I don't do yoga myself.
Could they be meaning the bay?
No.
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 It's not a bay.
Yeah, there's another group that does the bay one, this isn't the bay.
There is yoga for surfers, so maybe that's a type of yoga for surfers.
But it's from eight to, I think it's like two hours.
I was just saying.
We, I don't, I don't know, it's weird. I mean, I don't know if it's weird or not, I just don't know anything about it.
I think we could call it.
Any other questions, comments from council or if not, is there a motion?
I'll make the question.
Yes, sir.
They don't have any employees, I take it, I, you know.
The second one?
The workers' comp, you know, I mean, we made the other, the surf camps have workers' comp, so I mean, just to be, is that fact is what it is, are they surfing, they teaching surfing, or are they just doing, you know, yoga on surfboards? You know what I mean? It's, it's a-
I think we can call it something else.
You can.
I'm curious now.
I don't know, maybe the other website, probably his photos, I don't know, I didn't, I don't have beach yoga and then we didn't do sound yoga. Yeah, right?
Yeah, another question, where's Salt? Is that, is that, is that fresh air or salt or salt?
Oh, boy.
Any other, any questions or comments? We have a motion to approve my council president.
With the condition?
With the condition?
Second?
The second by councilmember Kraft. Local?
Thank you, council president DeMichael?
Yeah.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Applefield?
Yes.
Next is payment of claims, number 183. It's payment of claim from June 9, 2023 to June 22, 2023, the bill list. Any questions, comments from council or if not a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Motion by councilmember Rook, second by council president DeMichael. Local?
Councilmember Wilk?
Yes.
Council president DeMichael?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Applefield?
Yes.
Motion approved.
And next, our resolutions, I'll read them in summer fashion. 184, approving seasonal pump-out boat operators for the 2023 summer season. 185, authorizing the designated miscellaneous refund Marina Slip 123. 186, awarding a contract to Frank's Truck Center through the Educational Services Commission of New Jersey, ECC NJ Cooperative Assistant Contract ESCN NJ 2021-09. 187 is the Seaside Parks Resolution Leap Implementation Grant as to shared service with Seaside Heights concerning a sweeper, road sweeper, rather. 188, approving the Alcohol Beverage Control Social Affairs Special Permit for Seaside Park, the Alcohol, Inc. 189, authorizing the sale of surplus property no longer needed for public use on an online auction website. 190, appoint, confirming appointment to permanent title senior maintenance repairer. 191, appointing seasonal employees for the Department of Beach Control. 192, appointing seasonal employee for the Department of Beach Patrol. 193, authorizing the Borough Council to meet an executive session, and that is contemplated to be held in advance pending the public comment session. That would be at the conclusion of the meeting, and I know Steve can speak to that too, to make sure that the verbiage is accurate. And from the work session, we have 194. It's a resolution authorizing RBE engineering as per their proposal to provide consulting engineering services for the Decatur Avenue water tower rehabilitation. And it's a design phase bid documentation, bid phase services not to exceed $30,000. The resolution 195 is authorizing RBE engineering, a proposal to provide engineering services for Ocean Avenue water main replacement to continue where last project had ended on Phase 3B as per their proposal. And the base bid, they've given a construction estimate total to at $1,862,410. And concurrent with that resolution would be directive authorization for, is it Panhillah and Bill Maher and our administrator all to make the appropriate contacts through Deborah Ture and the USDA to make sure we change the scope of the prior application. It's very favorable financing, which we were unlikely to ever see again at 40 years financing at, I think it's 1.4, it's very limited, a very low interest rate. So it's to make sure that's utilized. 196 is a verbal resolution. It entails follow-up to a meeting held this afternoon, and we have received an email from Tony Giordano of a contractor installing the playground equipment at the 13th Avenue, 14th Avenue playground, and it's a change of scope of the work previously authorized with a rough number not to exceed $11,500. And as per the discussion at the meeting today and as per the email, there's a possibility of reducing that amount as well. Anything further from any council to, did I cover the USDA? Turn that over.
There's a 188, I've never, I've never seen this on here before. Why would we, why would we need to do this? Because it's for the regatta at the end of the summer, and I mean, they have their own liquor license, right?
I-
It's a private club, it shouldn't, why are we authorizing everything?
I know over the years we have, but I don't, I don't remember the history.
Maybe because they disclose to the public, or I guess it's, well, some public, does they have a name?
Yeah, I don't know why we would approve.
Totally one specific date, totally for that one event on September 2nd.
I think you're from our council, the Congress.
Yeah. I think it's that-
They need a special permit from the ABC, and any kind of special permit, it has to go through the Borough Council, I believe.
Yeah.
Okay, there you go, I answered our question.
Any other questions, comments on any resolutions from the council? If not, it's not required by law, but it's been a practice to go into the audience if there are any public comments on any of the resolutions, if anyone has them, if they could give their name and address.
Eddie Klein, I just have three little quick questions. Mr. Corelli, who will be the senior maintenance repairer, what will he be repairing? Is that vehicles or anything? What's his job description? Just first.
That's as per civil service title. It's actually cleaning up that which had been previously authorized by the governing body sometime back.
Yeah, I just wanted to know.
I don't know, Karen, if you, Sandy has, I-
Yeah, I mean, our maintenance repairers repair just about everything. So it's not, it's not a, it's not a silo of just doing automobiles or just doing maintenance repairs around buildings or other things. And this is just some housekeeping, he was previously appointed as provisional, now that he's passed a civil service exam, now he's permanent.
Okay, now, okay, that answers that question. I probably should have asked this after the last meeting. The water project along Ocean, you said it's going to be the water main and then properties along, is it just the properties along Ocean and not the side streets?
There are like 40, 40 something hookups, right? 46.
Okay, so it's, it's the properties along Ocean Avenue that we'll get?
I would imagine that's, that's where it goes.
So side streets would be another time?
Oh, yeah, yeah, that'd be Phase 3.
The continuation of 3B.
Yeah, this is a 3A, really.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, it's really, and it's also, you know, we have a couple wells on J Street, so the, you know, it's, so the line is bigger for him as well.
Okay. And my last question is, as far as this LEAP agreement, is $40,000 what a street sweeper costs, or is that just to get us to park? Well, that's what I was-
The goal is $400,000.
$400,000. Well, it's bigger than a drop in the bucket.
And it's a shared service with Seaside Heights. And I think it's, we share 25%. I think it's one of the-
State pay.
State pays 75.
State pays 75.
And we split 25% between us.
Pretty good deal.
Wow, that is a good deal.
Yeah.
Way to go. Thank you.
Any other public comments on any resolutions? Hearing none, I close the public portion and I entertain a motion from council as a consent agenda unless anyone has any issues on any of the resolutions. Motion by councilmember Rook, second by councilmember Kraft. Local?
Councilmember Wilk?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Applefield?
Yes.
Council president DeMichael?
Yes.
And that concludes the resolution agenda with the one exception being we're holding in advance temporarily a motion to go into a closed executive session. Is there anything else from the council at this juncture? Hearing none, we'll go into the audience for any public comments, if anyone has any, if they could give their name and address into the record. Yes, Eddie?
I asked this at the last meeting, I'm going to ask it again. Has there been a discussion about putting an ordinance, in effect a curfew ordinance?
I haven't discussed it. I guess we didn't discuss it, but I guess we realize that Seaside Heights just put something in on their boardwalk and also, I guess it's, what is it?
10 o'clock ordinance.
10 o'clock in, 8 o'clock on the beach. So, I, yeah, 8 o'clock on the ocean, unless there's an event going on. So I guess we're just playing along, just, we haven't talked about it, but in my mind, we're just keeping a close eye on it. We have a different environment, I think, than, than Seaside Heights has. And we only have a small piece of the boardwalk that, you know, couldn't have eaten for much, perhaps, like any area, it's all milk.
I'd like to think we're not naive enough to think these kids are only going to stay on the boardwalk. They can't find something on the boardwalk to fool around with or destroy. They'll be coming for personal property. They've been moving south as each town affects the ordinance, they've been moving south. We're right south of Seaside Heights.
Seaside Heights, it's easy to monitor their ocean because, you know, they have total visibility, plus they have gates that they shut down there, whereas, you know, we have accessibility at every other street virtually, and you really can't sit on the beach without a lot of policing, which I don't think they could support.
Yeah, but the issue is not just on the beach.
Yeah, I know that.
And what I'm afraid might happen is the horse is going to be long on before you folks start to think about shutting the door. And I know Steve said that in ordinance with, about a curfew is perfectly legal, was that what you said the last meeting?
Curfew ordinances are legal, yes.
Yeah. So I would urge you to not just sit back and say, well, we'll see how it goes, and I would urge you to be proactive, because people are not going to be, they're going to be less than unhappy if these groups of kids decide that they're going to come further south. And there's, there's nothing to prevent them from being here at 11 o'clock, at midnight. So I would urge you people to please talk about this and consider a curfew ordinance. It's, it's not going to solve every problem, I get that. But it would seem that we should kind of be in line with our neighbors to the north, and they all have them. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, Michelle?
Michelle Miller. And in accordance with what Eddie is saying, I understand that their problem at Seaside Heights over Memorial Day was younger kids now, they're 12 and 13, and this is a change So I urge you to at least discuss it and be prepared. I know that on my north end of town, there were a lot more kids than I ever saw before after, around Memorial Day and the week before, because usually we knew it was the prom. You know, the beginning of June, you knew that they were here, but they were gone. My second question is about pickleball. Was there an agreement about putting a sign up? A lot of people have said that La Velez has had more problems and lines, and when they can't play there, they're coming over to the pickleball by us. So I know that there was discussion about it. I ask you if you can put the sign up, that would be good.
Yeah, our recreation leader has reached out to a couple of vendors, they've been a little unresponsive in getting us quotes and sort of like mocked up signs, so we're, we wired them up by Memorial Day, but the vendors are really hooking us up. So it's, it hasn't been forgotten, matter of fact, I spoke with Joe about it again today.
Use a wooden sign, piece of plywood.
Vinyl, I mean, it doesn't have to be-
I think orderly does have to be.
It's a little more volatile, but it's not a big metal sign, it's just-
Okay. Thank you.
We have some good mockups.
And of course, Michelle, one of the partial answers to the problem you just came to us in the form of an urgent plea from the New Jersey League of Municipalities, and they were gassed and absolutely shocked when the New Jersey Legislature passed amendment to New Jersey's criminal code as to enforcement, as to juvenile, what had been labeled crimes and offenses, and that was totally modified, and the governor signed the law. So in many instances now, the hands are completely tied as to law enforcement. So that's certainly not something that a municipality has caused. Unfortunately, the state of New Jersey caused it. And above and beyond that, even when there's a serious offense, the level of paperwork that has been mandatory upon the police officers, if they even want to attempt to effectuate arrest of a juvenile, takes upwards of two hours or more. And then often that juvenile is released immediately. So there are very serious problems as to the change in New Jersey's criminal code, and so far, all of the pleas of the New Jersey municipalities, the other towns, the mayors associations have all met with no response.
I think what they ought to do is get all the retired teachers together. Get out there and whip those kids butts. We're calling the Guardian Beach, the Beach.
It's taken away here.
The Beach Guardian Agents.
Yes.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Joyce Paschalitis from 265 N Street, and I'm just trying to follow up on a complaint on 267 N Street and the situation of their property with some code violations. I was informed that it was escalated to the town attorney.
Yes, about a couple of weeks ago, the file was sent over to us, my associate is working on it, and we plan to have a submission to the governing body as to what we can or cannot do with regard to that property. Should be next week.
Next week.
Plan of action, I can't comment further on that at this point. But we have it and we're working on it.
Any other comments?
Hi, everybody, I'm Tony Hanson, I live on High Street, I know some of you, I don't know all of you. I just wanted to say a few things about an ordinance you guys talked about last week about the trailer parking, about not allowing it overnight. We have a lot of homes and a lot of rentals in this town that don't have off-street parking. And even if they do have off-street parking, it can't accommodate a watercraft of any size, whether it's a jet ski or a big boat. We're finally starting to rebuild this town after all the bad things in the last 10 years that have happened. Let's not deter any of the people from coming down. Give them a place to play, that's what this place is. We got water sports everywhere, that's the whole point of it. And if they can't come here, they're just going to go somewhere else, and that would just be a waste. Thank you, please consider that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? Yes, sir?
Nelson Rosenbing, 122 M Street. I'm just trying to follow up regarding if any improvements in the park, municipal parking lots, was mentioned last fall, that a lot of the people who come down for day, daytrippers, that they're parking, instead of parking head-on, they're parking, backing up. And I know that's an ordinance that says you're supposed to head-on park, but my point is that I don't think they're doing it intentionally, I think they're doing it because the signs are so small to read and they're so far and few between. I was just wondering if the council would consider improving the amount of signs so that the public is more aware, because it's, it's just not right to have these people citation, you know, when they come off the beach on their car because they backed in, so you're not going to unload this stuff out of their trunk at the boardwalk. Would be any consideration to improve those signs? There's no signs that I've seen at the kiosk, that's where those signs should be. When you're paying for something and you got a couple people standing there, somebody could read that sign. But otherwise, you park in between where those signs are located, you don't see them. But I know they're listed there, so you're covered. Is there anything we can do for the general public, for this friendly, friendly town to work on that? Is it feasible?
We'll make a note, talk about it. Thank you.
I have ideas, if you need any, I will certainly offer them.
Well, there's another side to that argument.
What is that, sir?
That's people don't want a whole lot of signs all over town. You know, I've heard that many times, sitting here, that we have too many signs, well, you got to put another sign up, right, chief? You've heard this.
You remember when we had the meters, each meter had, had a parking only, but the other part to this is if you're backing into the space, you're traveling against the flow of traffic. There's the one-way lots up there, so when you start backing in, you're going counter to the flow of traffic, which you shouldn't be doing.
You know, you're talking, you're not talking about billboard, are you? You're not putting up billboards about this.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just relaying to you what my experience is up here.
If you add some at the kiosk, take a few down that are alone in parking space if you want to equalize your amount, right?
I'm just, that's not even my area, but I'm just telling you what the argument's been on the other side of that.
We can muffle that argument, we take a few down, add a few in the right spot. Mr. Mayor, has there been any, what is the latest on the development of getting the Seaside Park umbrellas and chairs out for the public? Was the plan being formulated?
Yeah, we have a bid on it.
I have a bid right now until the 25th.
Oh, all right, I missed that.
M-U-N-I-C-I-B is in Bravo ID, pull it up, hit locations and you'll see Seaside Park, and the chairs and umbrellas are on there for another two days.
You can count the bid.
All these are based on our website.
Right on the website.
How long has it been up?
Since, well, the-
Based on our website.
The auction started on June 12, we put it on the website, I think, June 6.
Okay.
If you don't initiate a bid, you're going to miss the bid.
That's a joke.
Stay away, do you think of that one?
That's a joke, son, that's a joke.
Last question I have here.
Last question, Ms. Peterson. Regarding the municipal boatyard, you know, I walk by there once in a while, just to walk. And I, I see the same old rusted trailers and some broken down boats that have been there for probably 20 years, 15. It's unsightly. Is there anything, I don't, I don't believe that they're paying a fee that keeps them.
Of course they are.
They are?
Yeah.
Great, great, then I have anything else to ask?
Okay.
Any other public comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public portion and I would entertain a motion. And we can get input from our attorney. It's a motion to go into a closed executive session concerning pending litigation and.
Attorney-client privilege.
Attorney-client privilege. So do we have such a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
By council president DeMichael, second. Second by council member Rook, roll call.
Council President DeMichael?
Yes.
Councilmember Welch?
Yes.
Councilmember Dr. McKeon?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Yes.
Councilmember Condos?
Yes.
Councilmember Ammavell?
Yes.
Motion approved.